Not me. All right. Good evening, everyone. It's already February 6th. It's crazy. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna call the town council meeting to order. If we could all please rise to salute the flag.
I'd like to salute the flag from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, as we usually do in accordance with Massachusetts general laws. I think it's Chapter 38, Section 20. I have to inquire if anyone here is videotaping, recording the meeting. So we have Abby from the record. Anyone else way in the back? From the Republican. And the city is also recording the meeting. Videotaping? I'm not so sure. It doesn't always work that well. But anyway, we're definitely recording. I don't know. Could you take a roll call, please?
Yes. Counselor Laflambeau.
Here.
Counselor O'Brien.
Here.
Counselor Griffin.
Here.
Counselor Smith. Vice President Clune.
Here.
Counselor Giuseppeino. Counselor Powers.
Present.
Counselor Eager.
Here.
President Sullivan.
Here. Thank you very much. We have a quorum, so we're gonna move along. Before we get to the meat of our agenda, we have a special introduction this evening. We have the West Springfield Colleen and her court. Of course, they're all Colleens, I think, in Irish. So Lynn, if you'd like to, if you could come to the microphone or the Colleen and introduce everyone who's joining us, along with any award winners who might be with you. Just pull that microphone down.
I'm a little short.
That's okay.
Hi, I'm the 2023 Colleen Emily Spear, and this is my court.
I'm Gillian Stopa.
Hi, I'm Paige Davis.
And we have two other Colleen members who are in college, and they are Kayden and Lauren.
Great. Appreciate it. Award winners, I think we have one in the audience. Two? Someone else is here? Come on up. Oh, and Tim. Come on, Patrick. Wait, wait. Before you guys leave, Colleens, don't leave yet. Don't leave yet.
I'm the very shy Patrick Kelly.
Are you related to George Kelly?
He's my cousin.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Tim, you want to tell us who you're representing and?
I'm the Jinx Power Award winner.
Okay, congratulations.
A board member for many years.
At the Jinx Powers?
As you know, I danced down the streets of Hoyoke.
Yeah.
This year, I might not be dancing as much. Thanks for having me.
Uh, thank you. Tim, you want to?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Tim Garska with Eastern State's exposition. Very proud to receive our award this year, and congratulations to the Colleen and her court. Thank you again.
All right. That's great. Appreciate it. Hey, before everybody leaves, why don't we, why don't we do a picture? Get out the counselors and you want to do it here? All right, come on up. You guys, come on up. All right, we're gonna put our grand Colleen in the middle. You guys stand on either side, and we'll stand behind you. No, you get in the chair.
Oh, in the seat. Oh, I'm the boss.
Yeah, should've.
Wait, wait, let's, uh, can we get tighter?
I feel like I'm a shrink.
Can you see everybody? Can you see Patrick?
Can you see Counsel Griffin?
Get my goods up.
All right, thanks very much. Congrats.
Thank you.
We'll see you parade dick. Pull this bad boy up here. Okay. I think there's a, wait, wait, before you guys leave, Lynn, is there a fundraiser for the Colleens and the court? Can you just tell us what that is? I can announce it. Is it the Irish Cultural Center?
Yeah, Wednesday night we have a, actually, Tim will be bartending in the field of Ignitarius.
Counting and taking pictures.
Yeah.
All right, so that's it. The Irish Cultural.
Bartending, 5:30 to 7:30, the ICC.
And all the money and tips raised goes to the St. Patrick's Day Committee and the Court. All right, great. Hopefully, everybody who's here tonight will be there on Wednesday. That'd be great. Thank you. Okay, all right. We have a public hearing on the agenda tonight. This is a continuation of a previously opened public hearing. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna move to open the public hearing on the proposed zoning map amendment for the parcel at the corner of Whitney Avenue and Highland Ave to be changed from Resident A-2 to Resident C, which was continued from January 17th. Do I hear a second to open the public hearing? Okay, as I mentioned, this is a continuation of a public hearing. I do have the minutes from the last public hearing in front of me with all the names of the people who spoke. And just so you know, procedurally, we don't, we try to remove any redundancy from these meetings so that anybody had spoken before, we have it all documented here, and the council has also received the summary of your comments. So having said that, the public hearing is open. Does the petitioner have anything to offer?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council. At the January 17th initial city council meeting, it was quite obvious that the townspeople, the Sisters of Providence, are deeply concerned with the traffic and safety issues, as well as the final design issues as proposed by Mr. Zuckerman and Sterling Properties. There were a lot of negative comments directed at the Pyramid Corporation, so I just want the record to be clear that Pyramid simply owns the lion. They own the raw land. They have an agreement with Sterling Properties, which simply states that Sterling will purchase the land if and when a zone change occurs and when the project is approved. So as negative a light as they want to cast on Pyramid, Pyramid is simply looking to sell the land. They're not the developer in this project. And that being said, I'm gonna request this, this evening, to have the public hearing continued for at least 60 days. And the reasons are really simple. Traffic. You heard it. It's been, it's been, it's been, it's been the highlight of this whole application. And I just spoke with Connor Knightley just moments ago. I spoke to him earlier today. I've been working with him for the last two months, and he just got a proposal from Pear Inc. of Hoyoke, who the town works with, for a proposal to do the analysis, to do a water analysis and to do a traffic study analysis. And it's rather an expensive proposal, but I haven't even seen it. He just forwarded it to my email seconds ago, and I'm gonna talk to my client, but I'm sure we're gonna share on the cost of that if the town so moves forward. And this will take some time. Obviously, we've gotta negotiate a contract with Pear. We've gotta pay for it. They've gotta do the study, and we've gotta come up with some solutions. And I think that, that we will, as I've said right from the get-go, we will come up with some solutions. And secondly, and more importantly, it was pretty loud and clear how the townspeople feel, and rather than be adversaries, I am personally gonna reach out to everyone in this room tonight to set up a neighborhood meeting. Not, not set up the meeting tonight until I get the traffic straightened out, but I'd like to set up a neighborhood meeting so that they can meet with Mr. Zuckerman personally and with Mr. Leveque and to look at the final proposals, the final project, how that he perceives it, it would look, and so the townspeople can ask and answer every question that they could possibly have. I've also reached out to John Wazlowski from the Sisters of Providence this morning, and I offered to set up a separate meeting with him to, to, to address any issues that he may have with the traffic, and he indicated he was willing to do so. So simply stated, without working together with the city, the DPW, the Sisters, and everyone in this room, this process, this process will be nothing more than adversarial. And the end result, if the zone change was denied, is exactly what I don't think anyone wants in this room. That'll leave Pyramid with no alternative but a 40B low-income housing project. If they don't want it, nobody in this room wants it. I don't think the council wants it. I don't think the mayor wants it. So the only thing that we can do is to continue to work toward a good project. And I think we have a great project, but I think we need to come to some understandings of how we can make it better. So I will respectfully request this council tonight to continue the matter for 60 days, and I'll continue to work with the, with the DPW, and we'll continue to get the studies done, and hopefully we'll come back to you with some answers.
And with the neighbors?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'll meet, I'll meet with the neighbors as soon as I have something to offer. I mean, I gotta get the traffic study done first.
Okay.
So the traffic study will give us some solutions, give us some costs associated there with, figure out who's gonna pay for whatever needs to be done. And then at the same token, Mr. Leveque will have some time to fine-tune the project, and then the neighbors will get a chance to sit down and meet with Mr. Zuckerman one-on-one and just have a sit-down and ask and answer every potential question that they have. He's done this. He's got 22 projects that he's completed in his career. So he's working on two right now. So that being said, we just need some more time.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Having said that, and not having anything else to offer from the petitioner, and I know there was a lot of questions, I turn it over to my fellow counselors as to how you'd like to proceed. Counselor O'Brien?
We've moved to close the public hearing.
Okay, do I hear a second? I'll second it for discussion purposes. All right, so there's a motion in front of the council to close the public hearing, which means once closed, we ultimately would be voting on the project. So I'll open it up for comments and discussion from counselors. Anyone? Counsel, Counsel Eager?
Yes, I'd like to hear what the petitioners come forward with, because just, just looking at what's happening, okay, it's very hard to build a high-end, any type of rental property besides low-end housing, because we have to go through the zoning permitting, everything else. We don't have that, we don't have the minimum number of low-income housing, and so their threat is real, okay? And I would prefer a nice project being proposed that we approve, that we negotiate, rather than another developer going through Boston overriding our zoning. So I would like to give them the benefit of the doubt and time so they can give us the final solution.
Okay. Counselor O'Brien, having made the motion?
So tonight, they want an extension to provide information that could have been provided six months ago. That's been the problem. There's been no information provided. And if you had adequate, good information, you would have put it forward first. That would have been the first thing you would have pushed out, was how the traffic's not gonna be affected. You can anticipate what the questions were, because the questions were asked the first time you put the petition in. So coming back a second time without those answers was, I, I was quite frankly caught off guard by it to say, well, what's changed? Now we're gonna do that after people, this, this neighborhood has organized in a way, actually, the whole town, there's people from other parts of town that are against this, that have come out to say they do not want it. And quite frankly, I don't respond well to threats. 40B to me is a threat. You can do whatever you want, but don't threaten something that you know it's just not the right thing to do. So the infrastructure work alone makes this project not feasible. The, I don't, you don't need to do a traffic study if you've lived in this town to know, and the residents certainly know what traffic is like day-to-day there. When you add another 100 cars to it, every day is Black Friday and the holiday season. That intersection was designed to handle a certain volume, and it's already exceeding that. So there's nothing you can do that would make your project feasible or viable with the money you would have to spend to correct the traffic problem, number one. We've also heard that water pipes wouldn't be adequate. They'd have to be done. There is a lot of infrastructure work that frankly, I don't believe the developer would be willing or able to put up in order to make this project go forward. But the biggest thing is, is taxpayers and people who have purchased homes, who have, go to work every day and come home and expect to have a reasonable amount of privacy and say in their community, have said they don't want it. And that's all I needed as their district counselor to hear, is there's. There's not much more to be said on it in that we cannot turn our backs on the residents. This project is not gonna be what they projected to be. They'll, it'll be sold quickly, and it will turn into just what everyone doesn't want. So I am diametrically opposed to it, and I hope that the rest of the council agrees with that.
So. So, Counsel, you're opposed to the continuation of the public hearing? Yeah, but that's, the discussion is on the motion in front of us. Closing the public hearing. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counsel Eager?
We're voting to close or continue?
Uh, the motion is to close the public hearing, so if you vote yes, the public hearing is closed. Okay, then no. Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Clune?
No.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Oh, that leaves it with me. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something from the, the president's chair here, even though I'm maybe not supposed to, because we're in the middle of this. However, as a favor to the developer, I'm gonna vote to close the public hearing. So four in favor, three opposed, the public hearing's closed. Okay, so we're moving on.
What does that mean exactly?
Who, who asked the question? It means the public hearing is closed, so now the council cannot vote on any matters that a public hearing is still open. So now it allows the council to vote on the proposal if they so wish. So that's why the question was, is really important to close the public hearing or to keep it open. If you keep it open, in fairness, like I said, in fairness to the petitioner, I wanted to close the public hearing because I can't speak for the council, but I didn't think it was gonna pass, and I didn't want them to spend a lot of money for not. In fairness to the counselors who aren't here and the ones who voted for it, usually you continue the public hearing to allow the petitioner to do their due diligence, even though, as Counsel O'Brien said, they might be, you know, a year behind. But, and it allows them to meet with the, in fairness to the neighbors, it allows them to meet with the petitioner also, to determine the size and type and figuration of the project. So by closing the public hearing, that now will not happen. So the council will take a vote on the proposal that's in front of us to change the zone from residential to multifamily. So instead of kicking it down the road. We're gonna vote on it. We're gonna, yeah, I'm not sure. We're gonna vote on it. No, the council is gonna vote on it. We couldn't vote on it if we left the public hearing open. That's the purpose of the motion to close the public. I did, I did. I said I wanted to give you the opportunity to meet with them on their own. All right, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna belabor this. All I said was, I'm closing the public hearing, so the council can vote on it, okay? So the public hearing's closed. All right, so we have a request now from the petitioner to. Excuse me. Excuse me. What's the request from the petitioner? The petitioner's withdrawing their zone change to the city of West Springfield. See how we do, all right? All right, we'll move on the agenda. All right, on a, now we're open for public comment. Anybody wanna speak relative to anything that has not had a public hearing on it? Okay, seeing none, approval of the minutes. I'll move to approve the regular minutes of January 17th, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? Go to a vote. Counsel Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Griffin?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Eager?
Yes.
I vote yes. The minutes are approved. Communication. Anyone have any communication for the counsel? Counsel Griffin?
Thank you, Mr. President. A somber moment inclusive of, of the name Sullivan. His name is Richard Sullivan, who was basically a martyr and a mentor to so many individuals in this fine city going back decades. He passed away peacefully at home on the 23rd. He was born back in 1927 and spent probably, I, I, I don't know how many decades with this city in volunteerism, whether it be the West Springfield Boys and Girls Club, served on numerous committees inclusive of the Board of Selectmen for six years. He was the chairman of the Finance Committee for a number of years and other town committees who you could probably list from here to the back of the room. He's a mentor and a, someone who, who as, as elected officials can mentor or could, could learn a lot from. Across the aisle, people who maybe disagreed with him in, in certain instances in life, one of the things that you could count on is he was gonna be there to listen to you. And that was a lengthy and long prosperous record. And to lose him at the age of 95, whether it was 55 or 95, to lose him at the age of 95 was just an absolute blessing to watch and learn from such a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful man. So I'd just like a moment of silence based on everything he has done for this city. To lose him is a very, very somber moment, and we have lost a, a truly dedicated man. So if we could have a moment of silence, President Sullivan.
Thank you, Counsel.
For your uncle, by the way, who probably mentored you more than anybody, I would, would love it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
While we have everybody still in the audience, there's, I do wanna note, and, you know, one of the things that makes West Springfield great is our volunteers on all the different boards and committees that people volunteer for and are appointed to and approved by the mayor. So while everybody's here and listening in, I would encourage, we're looking for a couple spots. One is on, is on the Conservation Commission. They need a member. They've been, went out one for a year. And there's another spot open on the Redevelopment Authority, which we truly appreciate. Anybody in this room who might be interested, go to the mayor's office or just send the mayor a note, and he'll certainly consider you, and then we come in front of the council for approval and appointment. So I know those two committees are in dire need of somebody to help out and have been for a couple of years. So anybody who might be interested, please consider that. And while you're all here, you happen to have the benefit of our student rep, who's gonna, oh, Counsel O'Brien? Sure. So I'll explain what happened on the zoning thing in a minute, but we're gonna hear from our student rep first. He's gonna lighten us all in the room.
Yeah, sure. I just have a couple of things to talk about today. First of all, I'd like to start off by saying that last Friday, the school held a. Okay, that works now. All right, so I would like to start off today by saying that last Friday, the school held a mini scholarship fair for the class of 2023, following the initial cancellation due to the weather. As we know, it was like negative 10 degrees or something like that. Many of our seniors took the opportunity to explore and learn about the various scholarships available to them, and as an incentive, they were able to participate in a raffle to win free Six Flags tickets. So that was pretty nice. The school is also running the STEAM Session 3 program, which is scheduled to begin in the next following weeks. Running after schools, STEAM is a grant-funded program that hosts an array of fan club activities and offers help in tutoring to students. Interested students should be looking out in the next coming weeks. Pep rally. Scheduled for the February 17th, the student government body will be hosting a February pep rally, in which all the classes will compete with one another in a series of fun and engaging activities. The pep rally serves as a much-needed morale booster for the students, and especially during this cold and strange, strange time, I think it will be very beneficial. NHS, the National Honor Society, is also planning for their yearly group service activity. This year, they have planned to host a movie night sometime in the month of March, while the specific movie hasn't been picked yet. Admission to the movie will be free with a donation of a canned good. And lastly, while the winter sports season is coming to an end, it's never too early to start thinking about the spring sports season. Students interested in participating in baseball, softball, track and field, tennis, and lacrosse can now sign up on family ID by the March 31st deadline.
Thank you very much. Can't believe we're already into spring. It's crazy. Wow, thank you. So just to explain what happened before, because obviously, everybody's still here, so I'll take the opportunity to do that. So when we voted to close the public hearing and the petitioner sensing a negative vote, meaning the council was gonna vote against their project, even though we only have seven counselors here. So for a zone change, it's a requirement to make any zone change, you need six counselors, whether there's six here, seven, eight, or all nine of us. You need six out of the, the nine. So what happened was, based on closing the public hearing, the petitioner sensed that their project was gonna be rejected, which I can't speak for my fellow counselors, but it probably would have. And the, what they did is he ran to the microphone, he didn't run, but he came to the microphone and he withdrew his petition without prejudice, which means that it's, it's off the table. It's not gonna happen. He might be able to bring it back sometime in the future, if they do. I'm not sure, but I can't speak for them. But, so that's what happened. So the, the petition to change the zone in that area is now gone. So there's nothing before the council to vote on because they withdrew it. So that's what that meant when he withdrew without prejudice. So hopefully, that clarifies what happened a few minutes ago. You have a question? 40B, 40B. Yeah, pretty much. I don't know if I use the word blackmail, but yeah, they basically can go through Boston or wherever they go to get approval for that. And they can do it because our low-income housing, as Counsel Eager mentioned, is below the threshold percentage-wise. So they might come back with a, it wouldn't be a petition because it wouldn't come in front of the council. So they might be able to come back and say, we're putting low-income housing in there, and we wouldn't have any say in the zone change. They would petition the Boston or wherever they go. I don't know if Jen knows or not, but maybe Counsel Powers knows where they could, did it go to Boston for 40B? Yeah, so they would go through Boston.
It's a long process where they can skirt some of our zoning.
Yeah, they would skirt the zoning, right. Yeah, they would skirt the zoning, right.
So it could be eminent domain, something-
No, eminent domain is different. That's when the town would take the property. So we would, if we took it for public use, the town could take it under the eminent domain clause. So let's say we wanted to put a DPW yard up there, we could take that seventeen point six-six acres and put a DPW yard up there, if we want to do something like that, but the, um, we'd have to talk to the mayor. Yes.
So for, if it did get to the point where the state said, okay, you're gonna ask the town how it's gonna work before you really are, would they be forced, do you know, to do the water study, to make sure there's sidewalks, to do a traffic section?
Oh, no, 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 no. No. That's was part of their whole pitch. They wanted to engage and, you know, pitch the project and say they might do some of these things.
We're already way over the public hearing.
Yeah.
Way, we're way over the public hearing. We're actually violating at this point.
Yeah. So I'm just explaining, this is informational.
I, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, what's gonna happen, Mr. President, is there's a series of questions that are gonna arise, and sooner or later, our town attorney, as luck, I understand what you're doing.
Yeah.
But I know the rules and regulations of, of the Massachusetts general law, and we are-
Borderline.
We are borderline with the questions that you're asking, and I'm not trying to shut it down. I, I voted the way I voted, but as these questions arise, and continue the questions, we move to close the public hearing. So we closed the public hearing. Now we're getting questions on things about the public hearing, which could violate Massachusetts state law, because some of the individuals have left the building. Okay? And when they leave that building, they don't get a chance to come up to the microphone either. And I apologize for that.
So I can't ask questions?
No, I just asked, I asked President Sullivan to explain what a withdrawal was, and that was it, just so you'd understand, because I couldn't get ahold of all of you together, so.
No, no, it's getting-
No more questions. That was just to explain it.
What I would suggest for everybody who has their hands up, if you want to email us like you did before, we can get you answers to those questions. I would put it down in writing, and we can send them to the city solicitor, you put your thoughts in paper and send us an email. But we can't, no, we're not gonna engage any-
What I'm, what I'm def, what I am afraid of is the petitioner is going to see this back and forth, and then opine that we've negated Massachusetts general law by allowing answers and questions to something that we could not, we cannot engage anymore.
I get it.
So I don't mean that, and I hate-
No, no, no.
The last thing I want to do is put the president on, on a, on a spigot, if you will, for answering those questions. But I can see it coming, because I could see the room, and I could see the arms raising everywhere, and once we engage, it's a violation of state law.
Yeah. So put your, put your questions in writing and send them off, and we'll get them answered for you. So what I'm gonna do now is I have to move down the agenda on the new business-
I knew you were coming. I knew you were, you was cringing over there.
So anyway, all right, so, I'm gonna go to new business, if there's, if there are no objections, I waive the formal reading and refer the requested supplemental appropriation of one hundred fifteen thousand dollars to DPW trash collection and disposal account to the Budget Committee. We will have a public hearing on the request on February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, seven PM. Okay?
Second.
I don't know, we just kind of forward it, so, but I appreciate the support.
A little jumpy on that.
That's all right. It's all cool. All right, so I'm gonna, the following loan authorization order that will be considered by the council must first be read into the records, so that's what we're gonna do. Be it ordered that one million fifty thousand dollars is appropriated for the purpose of financing the following projects, Circle Drive Water Main Improvement Project, including all costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow one million fifty thousand dollars under General Law Section Forty, Chapter Forty-four, Section Eight, or any other enabling authority, and that such bond shall be general obligations of the town. The order is being referred to the Budget Committee, and we will have a public hearing on the request on February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, seven PM. I'm gonna keep going.
Yeah, yeah. Why not?
I'm gonna move to approve the proposed resolution to modify the town council meeting calendar for the month of April, thereby changing the date of the regular meetings from April third and April eighteenth to a single meeting on April tenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So, as was mentioned during the first meeting, as was mentioned during the first meeting, to change the dates of the council meetings, we have to have it done by resolution, and based on a quick survey of those who might be available for the second meeting in April, I thought it'd be good to put a resolution together, so we met once on April tenth, combining the two meetings. I did check with Sharon Wilcox, that does not at all interfere with any of the budgetary process, actually would make it more efficient for the capital, capital program budgeting process. So thus the, the resolution to change the April meetings to that April tenth date. Any other discussion? I just want to make sure I threw in an explanation. Anyone ready to vote? All right. Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes. unanimous, thank you. All right.
Did you skip the citizens' speak-out?
No, I asked and nobody responded.
I didn't hear you.
Okay, well, let's finish this, and then I'll give you an opportunity. Counselor Powers?
Move to approve the proposed historic preservation restriction on the property known as Fifty-Five Altamont Avenue.
Second.
Counselor Powers, was this subcommittee, did you want to continue that?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to continue this.
All right, so we'll move to second, remove the motion.
Oh, you're right, my apologies. So I'm gonna remove the motion to approve the proposed historic restriction on Fifty-Five Altamont Avenue.
Remove to your second.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so, what's your motion?
So I'd like to move to continue this until Tuesday, February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. We discussed it-
Wait a, second, second.
Thank you. So, at our subcommittee meeting tonight, we had a couple additional questions, not on the restriction itself, but in essence, how it will be handled, and then we're looking for updates since we last purchased the property in two thousand and seventeen, both on carrying costs, improvements, and then we have some additional questions about management, long-term. I think the council is thinking very fiscally about this, or at least my subcommittee, so.
Okay, any questions for Counselor Powers on the motion to continue? Seeing none, Counselor Eager?
Questions?
Oh, you have a question?
No, no, no.
No, we're going to a vote.
Are we voting? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes. Just continue to February twenty-first. Okay, seeing nothing else, and come in front of the council, I will acquiesce to anyone who has anything to speak, public speak-out, as long as it hasn't been, hasn't had a public hearing related to the topic.
My name is Gordon Durfee, Ninety Riverdale Street. You know, the object in competitive city planning is to entice your town businesses, into your town businesses, that use the least amount of services and get, and to get the neighborhood towns to house the workers. This makes for more tax income and less cost. To me, it seems simple that we need a little help because we're losing our largest taxpayer, accordingly, according to what I've heard. And it's maybe time to get community development, to get some businesses interested in this town, some more of them, and at least balance the housing for those businesses. If not, try to get other towns to take that housing. Looks like Hoyoke is sending some of their housing in our direction right now, or trying. And that isn't related to the, the hearing, it's related to the fact that, you know, Hoyoke is building a lot right on our border and putting in a lot of people that need housing. And a lot of people don't seem to want to live in Hoyoke too much, and they love to live in West Springfield. But I think community development should be kind of asked to step up a little bit. And things like planning, yes, we need to understand what's gonna happen to our sewer system, our water system, whatever, and we need to put those limits onto our plan, not just helter-skelter, take a zoning change, take a this change or a that change. It needs to be town-wide, it needs to balance out so we can bring our, our, keep our taxes down, or bring them lower if we possibly could, and that's basically what I got to say.
I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, we're in the public speak-out section.
Dave Banus, Seventy-Eight Cary Lane, West Springfield. We have some property off of Bernie Avenue, I'm gonna say about fifty acres. Currently, it's being used for farmland. They grow their corn, they grow their pumpkins, they grow anything they want to grow there. It's been surveyed recently. Now, Caesar, who owns that property, wouldn't get it surveyed unless something is planned accordingly. Now, if you've got fifty acres, approximately now, I'm not sure of the size, but I'm gonna use fifty just to make life easy here. You build fifty houses on an acre. The zoning in West Springfield is not an acre, so let's double the houses. That's a hundred houses on a half an acre. That Bernie Avenue is going crazy with traffic. So I'm not sure what's going on here, and I'm not sure whether the counselors, President Sullivan, you're aware, the councilor are aware, that this property has been surveyed recently. And I'm not sure what's going on, but I'm alerting you that something is going on. So in your infinite wisdom, if you can look into it and see what's happening, I would appreciate it, and the neighbors on Cary Lane, Kelly Drive, would certainly appreciate it, because they keep asking me, and I don't have an answer. That's it, guys.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? All right, we're closed. Thank everyone for coming.